Franklin County Board of County Commissioners, nine session. Commissioner Jones, would you lead us in prayer and pledge, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, we thank you today for this day that you've given to each and every one of us. We thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning. We're believing you to impart wisdom and discernment unto us today, God, not just about the issues that are in front of us now, but the issues that are going to be out in the future. Because the decisions we make here today will impact not only today, but our future and every day that you should give us to live in this beautiful place we call home. We thank you for it, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Next on the agenda will be approval of the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion on hold by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Mastin. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously. Next on the agenda will be payments of the county bills.
Removed.
Secured.
Got a motion on hold by Commissioner Mastin, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously.
Come up to the podium, sir.
Mr. Chairman, before we start, I want to clarify a couple of things, public comment. One, I know a lot of people were scheduled to come here for the, that item and alligator point.
Right.
That issue has, that application's been withdrawn, so that will not, that public hearing will not happen today. That won't be heard. I have, also have a feeling there are quite a few people here today about Lanark Village and that Dollar General that's going to be here. What is before the board today is not the public hearing, it is your decision to, is for you to decide today if you're going to allow it and schedule it for a public hearing. So, there won't be any time during the meeting, past public comments to be heard about that, that application here today, or what's before the board today is what I should say. Okay? So, I just want to clarify that for the public and for the board.
Okay.
Okay?
Go ahead, sir.
My name's Sean Oxendine, I'm from Carabel, Florida. I'm a builder here in Franklin County. I found myself in a situation here recently with a friend and a future homeowner, and I was just, I guess I'm here today to ask the board if they would consider looking at a ruling that the county has a 50-foot setback in a critical area from the wetlands. The ruling, from my understanding, was made in the eighties, and a lot of things have changed since the eighties. Back then, we were able to build houses lower to the ground, and I don't know if that's anything to do with the way that it is. But this lady owns three lots, and in the three lots, we've combined the lots, and she still can't get a house without being in that critical area. And I would just ask y'all if we can relook at it or address it, if anything's changed in the last thirty-some-odd years. The city of Carabel has a 20-foot setback, from my understanding. Apalachicola has a 20-foot setback. Walcol, County has recently deleted their setback altogether. You just can't get in the wetlands because it just was taken away from the tax basis and people weren't able to build with these regulations. Liberty County is 35 feet, and my question is, why is the city of Apalachicola one way and the city of Carabel pretty much the same way, and the county is different? And I, you know, I don't know what else to do but to ask y'all if y'all would consider looking at that in the future. I have something that's pending now in the Board of Adjustments, and I will be back before y'all in the future. And I just wanted to kind of, I guess, give you a heads up.
Sure, okay. Mr. Schuler, can you go give some?
Yeah, so just to flesh it out for the board, at last month's Board of Adjustment meeting, there was an item on the table, Mr. Oxendine was the contractor for the property owner who was presenting. The issue is that the lot, the acreage, as it's presently configured with setbacks and wetlands and your critical habitat zone, they can get a house on the lot, but they have to go slightly into the critical habitat zone, which means the Board's rule that the footprint of the building is reduced with 1,000 square feet applies. The matter actually was tabled at the last meeting and still being looked at. So, Board of Adjustment has not yet made a decision, so there's nothing ripe for your consideration. And furthermore, during your public comment, the Board doesn't take action during public comment either. But we are aware of the issue, it's being looked at, and there are, according to the property owner, potential new facts on the table which may, you know, possibly provide an exemption to the rule which reduces the square footage. I don't yet know whether the building plans have been turned in by the property owner at this point or not, so we're just waiting on information. So, my suggestion is wait until the Board of Adjustment makes its decision, then this will return to you in due course.
Okay. We'll get back with you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Public comments.
My name's Mike McCleod. I'm a landowner and resident of Franklin County for 25 years. I'm here to discuss the rezoning in Lanark. I'd like to go on record is that I object to this. I know you've all received my long letter of November the 5th, so I won't belabor all the, everything that I had in that letter. I have a question for the applicants' counsel. Where in chapter 63, 163, is the language regarding the rezoning and the land use change? I cannot find it. Also, the applicant's application for rezoning and land use change, you don't have any exhibits posted. I know there's some exhibits, they've been changed, I'd like to see them. It is the responsibility and the duty of this commission to protect the peaceful enjoyment of the residence lifestyle and the peaceful enjoyment of their residential property. Lanark Village is one of the prettiest areas in the county. It's rustic, and I think that doing this zoning will negatively impact the quality of life in Lanark Village. I talked to FDOT, they've approved, they've approved the traffic flow in that area. I think it's dangerous not to have a center turn lane, particularly eastbound. You don't have a road, a shoulder there, and I'm not sure you have right-of-way to build a shoulder. There is, Putnell Station is zoned commercial, which allows this use. I would suggest you let the free market decide whether or not the landowners for Putnell Station want to sell their property or not. It is fully within their right not to sell it, not to ever sell it, but that's not enough reason to add more retail zoning, just because the retail zoning is there, it's not available. I'd let the free market determine that. There's just no need for another Dollar General. You got a new one here in Carabel, I'm sorry, over in Carol, that's five miles away from this one. I just don't think we need a Dollar General in Lanark Village. I think it upsets the peacefulness and the calm that we enjoy there. That's about it. I'm not going to run over my three minutes, but I would like to know what the chapter, what language in chapter 163 is for this, and I'd like to see the exhibits for this application. But I'm opposed to it. I'm a retired developer. I know what this developer's doing, he's following orders. I get it. But anyway, I'd like for y'all to think long and hard about this because that's a really nice part of the country, and I'd hate to see it littered with a Dollar General store or any retail use. You got Lanark Market there.
Your time up, sir.
So, thank you.
Public comment? Come up, ma'am.
My name is Christina Saunders. I own the property that the Dollar General is looking at to put a store there. Progress is needed in the county to grow. If it does not have the progress, it stagnates. I don't think, I have seen the store in Carabel, it's a very nice-looking store, people in Lanark, I'm sure they will make that nice-looking, too. It is convenient for the elderly to go to the store there instead of trying to drive five miles down the road, and I, they're going to do a good job of it, and I would request your permission to consider long and hard to approve the public hearing and for the motion to pass. Thank you.
My name's Bill Mecler. I reside at the property that's right across the street from the proposed land use change. What I'm about to do, I've got three minutes to address the quality of the rest of my life, which would include enduring, if this project is approved, enduring how, 100 days or more of construction. I also enjoy the peace and quiet quality of life. I hear mullet jumping, I don't hear doors slamming, and that includes truck, cargo doors. What I haven't seen in the presentation so far by the developer is the seven residences that surround this island of existing commercial property. Seven homes that we haven't seen. This property that they're attempting to sister up to, join to, has not been operated as a commercial site since 1992, 57 years. In addition, there is no commercial activity within at least a mile in either direction of the proposed site. And one big concern I have is about the process. This project by the developers has been going on since July. We haven't known about it. What we have known and heard in the village, that this project is 99% going to fly. If this process hasn't been followed, how can someone say it's 99% in the bag, so to speak? We have had, going to Carabel is a ritual in the village. We ask neighbors if they want to go, we have, and we need to have a ride-share program in the village, but, and it also, by ride-sharing, it encourages the spirit of a village in the classic sense. So, we don't, when we go to Carabel, we go to the Dollar General, we go to the IGA, we go to Ace Hardware, we might get a bite to eat at a restaurant. So, commerce goes from ours to Carabel. Now, the people in Lanark Village, Lanark Village has existed over 100 years, and 1894 or so, there was a Moonlight Express that actually brought tourists down to enjoy the peace and quiet of Lanark Village. There was a railroad from Tallahassee to Lanark to Carabel. So, we've survived this long without a commercial property existing. Take away Dollar General, you know, is another issue, the land use and rezoning is the biggest issue.
Sir, your time up.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I would also like to...
Time up, sir.
Thanks, sir.
My name's Chris West, and I'm with the developer on the project that the last three folks have mentioned, and my understanding is that we may have another subsequent meeting for time for public comments, and we'd like to address each of those. I might submit, it might be, of course, at the Board's discretion that we hold the remainder of comments, or just ask that that, that we move forward perhaps with the time for the, the public comments to the, to the next meeting, and I don't know if there might be an agenda change to accommodate that, where we would just push forward to, rather than having, if we've got 10 more folks, that's going to take the, the time to discuss it this morning, we might think about just moving it to a time for public comments. I think the, the staff has mentioned that, that we weren't going to address that particular matter today, but, but I would leave that at the Board's discretion. Bye.
Well, they got it right for public comments. Public comment?
Thank you. I'm Mark Hopkins. My wife and I own property right across US 98 from the site that's being discussed, item 15 here in the agenda. There's a litany of reasons why we don't want commercial development there. I won't bore you with them, you know what they are. There is one unique issue, though, and that is that every car, every truck, every motorcycle, Lord only knows, are getting brighter lights every year, but every one of them that go to that site to shop comes out with the lights right on my house. No way they go anywhere other way. I'm on south side of the road, they're on the north side, and they come out, it's going to really destroy some of the things Bill was talking about here in mullet jumping and everything. We, we like to leave our house open and don't even use air conditioner for most of the summer now. August is different, but most time we get by without air conditioning, and it's quiet and everything. We can't, we bought property in the last century in that site to retire upon it. It's quiet, it's residential, we need to leave it that way. Now, there's been some talk about commercial property right there on Putnell property, and they using it, I think, to allow y'all, if you want to, to approve the rezoning. I'm against it, I want you to vote against it. But it kind of makes me laugh, I think it's a joke. The thing is, Bill, I can testify, for at least a half-century, it hadn't been commercial. Existing owners don't want it commercial. Or I guess they would have resumed it if they felt strongly about it. But if you rezone this piece of property in a residential area, you open Pandora's box, you don't know what's coming in. They don't even have to put a Dollar General in it. I mean, that's what they say they're going to do, and I'm sure they are, I don't question that. Next thing is they're going to justify used car lot, or marina, or a whole litany of things, trailer park, and you cannot disallow those requests if you approve this one, because this one's the first one. You let it out of the box, you won't put it, you can't get it back in. So, I would request you today, one of the options you could do is reject this thing. The, I don't know what the right term, anyway, vote against it, tell them to go away, it, it needs, I got no objection to the store, I just don't like it in my backyard. People in Lanark can use one, but there's a lot of other places they could put their development that's better utility. Thank you for listening to me. I hope you can hear.
Thank you.
Good. My name's James B. Putnell. I and my two children inherited the property known as Putnell Lanark Station, which is half-commercial and half-residential at this point. I don't have any plans to, in the immediate future, to start a business there or to bring it back to, you know, commercial status like it used to be, because there's too many stipulations involved with the county's rules in, in doing so. They want me to destroy the buildings that are existing and build new, which my grandfather wouldn't have wanted it that way. He started that business in 1969, if I remember correctly. I was born in 1976, and I resided on that property all my life except for the 10 years I spent in Georgia. And like I said, I don't have any plans to do any developing with it, and it's strange because I do have such a large piece of property, and it is commercial, I was never approached by any developer to do any kind of building for Dollar General, or otherwise for that matter. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Hey, my name's Jamie Lawrence. I'm also representative for Terramore Development, but I'm also a, my grandparents and our family owns property down the road from this site. I just want to make a couple of comments about some things that have already been said. There's a lot of support for this project. I have a voicemail box full in my office, my voicemail, my phone's full, my emails are full. People are intimidated to come out and talk about this project. It's been a unique encounter of how we started. Yeah, we started back in July, but we've had to make strategic steps since then to be able to be here today. I held a community meeting, which I thought was very informative for, for the community. I sent out over 150 letters to people in the community, toward the tax assessor's website. We had 40 people there. I went over every single detail that, to that day of the project. I've answered every phone call, every email. My granddad is currently working on our house after the hurricane. We're in favor of it, our family, I have property owners that are adjacent to this property, that I'd be glad to, if we get to a public hearing, bring them here and let them speak in favor of it. Like I said, there's a lot of favoritism to this, there's a intimidation effect where people, it's a small community, so they don't feel like they can come out and share their true belief of not having to go to Carabel, or having, you know, an elderly parent, all these stories that I'm being told and the phone calls that I'm receiving. But I do want to say, there's a lot of support. We, we're here to make facade improvements, to make the nicest store possible for the area. But, and, and we also are property owners in Franklin County.
Public comment? Okay, next on the agenda will be Mayor Kevin Begus, City of Appalachia, total comments.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for inviting me.
Good morning, Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
First of all, I'd like to also thank all of your staff who've been so helpful over the last few months, Fonda Davis, Aaron Griffin, Michael Marone, Mr. Schuler. I really appreciate it, and the city appreciates it. And I'd also like to say, well, of course, we'll sometimes have differences with the county over policies. I think in the past, the city has been needlessly antagonistic sometimes with the county, so I apologize for some of the things that I think happened in the past that perhaps didn't need to happen. Just wanted to update you that we unanimously passed a resolution endorsing a full hospital here in Appalachia Cola, whichever way you move forward, you know, not some sort of, you know, emergency room. You know, we're not specifying which company you choose, because that's up to you in proceeding in, in future negotiations, and I know things may change over the coming months, but we unanimously believe there should be a full-service hospital here in Appalachia Cola, and, you know, that's how to honor the inter-local agreement that was made in the past. Just have a couple of other little things I'd like to mention, and these are my comments individually and not something the city has addressed yet. On the recent water wars decision, I just want to note that the last ruling that sent it to special matter, master, was a five-to-four vote. One of those five votes that was a majority to keep considering. Anthony Kennedy has retired now, so he's been replaced by Brett Kavanaugh. So, the whole question of whether the Supreme Court is going to keep hearing our water wars issue may come down to this change in the Board, in the Supreme Court majority. And then just one other small thing, I know we're all trying everything possible to help the bay recover, and we have so few hard options. I am hearing some concerns from local oyster dealers about the FSU Triumph grant, you know, perhaps it's something that we can give more feedback to FSU in the future about what they're doing, because there are some concerns over the project and how they're moving forward. But just like to say, I'm glad to work with you all on anything. I believe the city is glad to work with you. If you need more guidance on the Weems issue, if you feel we should, you know, hold special hearings or look at particular items more in detail, just let us know, and I appreciate working with you.
We appreciate that, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Next on the agenda will be Directors, Department Directors Report. Superintendent of Public Work, Mr. Howard Nevel.
Good morning, Commissioners. How y'all doing?
Good morning.
I've got absolutely nothing for the board this morning.
Our mayor recruit.
Happy Christmas, y'all.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I do have a question. Have we ever done anything with the, with the trees over on the south side of the property where we're potentially talking about putting the new building for your...
We, we hadn't. They hadn't come out and looked at it, really tried to shoot it to see where they want to put the building yet, so...
Okay.
Once they do that, once we get, you know, the exact location of where we're going to put it, management stake it out, then we move what trees we need to move, so...
Okay. Well, even if, even if it doesn't have to go where the trees are, I'd prefer not to have...
Yeah, no tree around it.
30-foot pine trees around it.
Yeah.
That's, that's the only reason I was asking.
Right.
Okay.
For public information, holidays, office, what are the days you're going to be working on?
We'll be, we'll work at Monday, then we'll be off the rest of that week.
Okay.
So, we'll be off at Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday.
So, we just have, next week you just will be working Monday?
Just one day, yes, sir.
Okay.
Unless emergency or something comes up, you know, they call me, so, other than that, we'll be off.
Hopefully, we don't have none.
I hope, I know we got some bad weather coming about 10, 11 o'clock, so they say, but...
Maybe not.
Maybe they'll bypass, go, go around. Okay, keep up the good work. Anybody else got anything for Mr. Howard? Y'all enjoy your Christmas.
Have a good Christmas, too. Thank you.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Fonda Davis, Solid Waste Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Only thing I have for you this morning, just to let you know that we have pulled the recycling bins from the Carabel site temporarily, and the reason why is just to slow down some illegal dumping, plan to put it back for the holidays.
Have you thought about putting a camera up, Fonda?
Yes, sir. We have, I've been in contact with the Sheriff Department, said they can help us, we looking at that.
Okay.
Yes.
And Fonda, I just want to reemphasize my dual interest with you, maybe a mobile recycling service that we have. I'd like to work with you in trying to get that implemented, that might help ease a lot of the problem.
Yes, sir. Sounds good to me.
You know, we had to do that over here one time. Did it work pretty good when we done it?
Yes, sir. That, we did it a couple of times here.
Yeah.
It slowed it down, we put it back out, picked up again, so that's, this is second time in Carabel, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, keep us, let us know what be going on with it.
Okay. Oh, we also will be closed at the landfill Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, 24th, 25th, and 26th of December. We will actually work that Monday and come back that Friday, have a landfill open, so... so.
Okay. All right. That's good, we want the public to know, just in case they- Okay, you and the, y'all done a good job, and Merry Christmas to you and your staff.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, and, and from the department, so Solid Waste, Animal Control, Parks and Rec, we wish you all a Merry Christmas also.
Thank you.
All right. Keep up the good work.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, now next on the agenda will be Mercy Management, Ms. Pam Bernay.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Hmm, I do not have any action items today, uh, for informational purposes, uh, FEMA called yesterday, so we're gonna have our FEMA person supposedly come down today and work through some projects with us.
Okay, so, um, anybody got anything for Ms. Pam?
I'd like to ask a question, Mr. Chairman, for Pam.
Go ahead.
Ms. Pam, are we close to doing any of the projects that are still outstanding from Hurricane Michael?
We're working on them. The biggest thing is, they tell us submit projects, we submit them, they tell us they don't need paperwork, and then they come back and say they can't process it, and say because we didn't put the documents in. So, it's just me and Jenny working them, and trying to get the documentation, and getting it uploaded, and getting it in, again, he's coming in today, they're kinda trying to push us to sign off on projects that, uh, we prefer that, that department look at it and tell us that the figures are right before we sign off on it, because we're not the department that's working in that area.
The only reason I'm asking is we're about fourteen months removed, so, and some things are still in the same dilapidated state that they were to begin with, so that's why I'm asking.
Some of those are mitigation projects, which we're working on, um-
Well, they're, they're either gonna do it or they're not, I guess is my point.
Yeah, exactly.
So if they're not, they need to tell us they're not going to.
That's what us government do, hurry up and wait. Anybody else got anything for Ms. Pam? Mayor Crivell, to you and your staff, and y'all keep up the good work.
Same to you.
Mm-hmm. Next on the agenda will be extension director.
Commissioners, good morning, Eric is with, uh, actually University of Florida, has a meeting with them today, so, his report is there, if you have any questions, let me know and I'll get them to him.
All right, we'll see him next year. Next on the agenda will be the TDC Administrator, Mr. Tom, Mr. John Solomon.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have a, um, just informational report, um, as the TDC did not have a meeting in December, but did want to update, uh, the commission on the collections recently garnered. Um, the September two thousand nineteen collections were ninety thousand fifty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. It's a nineteen thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollar and seventy-five cent increase of twenty-seven point eight eight over last September two thousand eighteen, which makes the fiscal year collections one million four hundred and one thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-two cents compared to one million three hundred and four thousand three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ten cents, which is a seven point four percent six increase, um, over last year, which is the largest increase we've had in the last two or three years.
That's good.
Yeah, very nice, thank you. That's good.
Um, website activity, we had twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight web hits in the month of November, and that's an increase of thirty-seven percent over last November, which was surprising to us because we, it was extremely high last year because of the storm. Um, another really good set of news is the visitor centers welcomed two thousand two hundred and twenty-five visitors in the month of November. The total for January, November two thousand nineteen is thirty-six thousand six hundred and forty-six visitors. That is up from the whole total of last year, which was thirty-one thousand three hundred and ninety-eight visitors, so we're a few thousand above last year in visitors for the county as well, so that, the numbers are also showing the visitor centers, um, increase as well. Um, the next scheduled board meeting is January eighth, um, at two PM at the East Point Visitor Center.
When y'all fiscal years?
October to September.
Okay. Anybody else got anything for Mr. Solomon?
John, I just want to say thank you for all the, uh, special effort that you've done this year. I've been privileged to be with you on several occasions, and I just appreciate your enthusiasm and your advocacy for volunteerism as well.
Oh, thank you, sir, we have, we have a great team, and we have a great county, so it's easy to work with.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Uh, John, I know that we don't have a date yet, but would you like to inform the board about the upcoming conference in the county?
Uh, yes, sir, I was called this past week, that Visit Florida wants to hold a venture tourism training course here in Appalachia Cola in Franklin County, which is quite rare, we don't get conferences that big in this area. Um, it's gonna be within the first two weeks of April, I'm gonna start working with them at the first of the year to, um, accommodations, and of course, they'll be using the armory for the, um, conference site.
Okay. Anybody else got anything? Okay, keep up the good work, and, uh, Mayor Crivell to-
Merry Christmas, John.
Merry Christmas to y'all, have a wonderful day.
Mr. Chairman, if you would, would you give me a five-minute break? Amy had some customers in there, so I had to kinda, she's trying to finish up with a customer, she'll be here in about, give her about five, ten minutes, okay?
Okay.
And then we could start the P and, uh, Board of Adjustments and P and C.
We're gonna take a, they want a break? Y'all want a break? Sure.